Meeting is called to order. Is there a motion to approve the electronic participation by school board?
So moved.
Mr. Connor and Dr. Tinsley, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mrs. Lawrie?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Thank you. You're on. Next is pledge of allegiance. Dr. Day?
Please rise. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Tinsley and who's?
Second, I heard you and Mrs. Lawrie.
Mrs. Lawrie, any discussion on the agenda? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul? Mrs. Lawrie?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Thank you. Next one is special presentation, ad hoc superintendent search committee, Dr. Tinsley.
Yeah, so McPherson and Jacobson should be online to give us kind of their breakdown of the stakeholder, from what they found from the stakeholder meetings. But before I turn it over to them, I just want to recognize some of the ad hoc committee members that are here tonight. So Dr. Nillis is the co-chair. He's here tonight. Principal Beatty is here as well. Mrs. Lawrie. So thank you all for being here.
Can I say, Dr. Nillis, would you please come on the podium? He's a former school board chair. He was a chair when I came on the school board. Very level-headed person. He ran the previous search when we hired our Dr. Edwards. He was chair of the school board. So we appreciate your service. It requires a lot of time beyond your busy work, sir.
And I would like to also say, I guess, Ms. Day, thank you so much for everything that you've done in this search. You've done all the behind-the-scenes work, and I know McPherson and Jacobson have sung your praises from beginning to today, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that's... Yep, they should be ready to go.
Yes, sir. Is there a way to call them up and saying, let's get going rolling? Or do you want me to move to the next item?
Let's move to the next item until we figure out what's going on technologically here.
Dr. Day, you were saying something?
I just got a text from Mr. DePaul saying he's trying to get connected, but he might, but he's having some trouble.
We'll get the logistics. Next one is school board member recognition. I think, Ms. Day, you have handed out the VSB certificates, right?
Yes, sir. Each envelope on my desk has a certificate.
This is a school board member appreciation. And on behalf of Dr. Copeland, I appreciate everything you do for the school district. I want to say a few words.
Certainly. I'd like to put you on the spot there. I had prepared comments earlier in the day, but I'll see what I can come up with right now. It was mentioned at the previous meeting that you were all volunteers, and you had to submit an application to do this. So I thank you on behalf of all of the teachers and staff and students of Lynchburg City Schools for taking on that responsibility. It takes a group of people that keep children at the forefront of everything that they do. Or may have, you know, teachers and retired directors and transportation folks and firemen. Group to carry out this job. It's great to work with a group of people that have their focus in the right place. There are roughly 7,500 approximately out there that rely on us every day to do the best that we can do for them. And I guess the part that people don't think of often is the parents send us the best kid that they have. And they want great things for their children every day. So we're doing what we can. It takes a dedicated board to continue to move us forward. And a definite dedicated board clerk to keep all this stuff going. Thank you for all you do. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir. And from my personal note, I appreciate everything you do as a team. You know, it's, I call you all the time, most of the time, sometimes at odd hours, depending on how the situation is. And you're not being compensated. And compensation is not the, is the goal here. It's to serve the community is the goal. Like you take calls in the middle of the night. Your guy shows up at my house at 2:00 in the morning, happy and smiling, and be able to do what needed to be done. But it cannot be done without the help of the staff, Dr. Copeland. Your staff is amazing, hardworking, and working day in, day out, on any needs which come arise from this board or from the community. So it's a joint team effort. And the city council today, as they said, they're part of the team. And three administration, the city administration, city council, and school board. Hopefully, if we work together, we can do amazing things in the city. So appreciate everything.
They're here.
Here. McPherson is there. So this item, we move back to the item number one. Dr. Tinsley, you're back on the floor, sir.
All right. Well, I've already said my piece, so I'll turn it over to McPherson and Jacobson. Dr. Ferry?
Yes, thank you, Ken. Thank you for having us. Once again, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to work collaboratively with you on this superintendent search. And our goal tonight is to present our findings from our stakeholder meetings. And we provided the full document for you. And hopefully this evening, after we review this, you will post this up on your district website. We will post it on our website and our home office. And we will also make it available to potential applicants so they are fully aware of the challenges and concerns that we learned during our time that we spent in the community. So Dr. White and Dr. Louder are with me this evening. They had the wonderful opportunity of spending three full days in Lynchburg on February 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And we certainly like to thank the Lynchburg school community and certainly Tina Day for helping coordinate their visit, which was very well organized and streamlined throughout the three days. And they could talk a little bit about that. During that time, I had the opportunity to meet virtually with board members. I also had a telephone conversation with one board member. And I also had the opportunity to meet with city council members, the mayor, and vice mayor. And I'd like to thank them for spending time with me during that time. And appreciate Alicia for the work that she did and helping organize that process with me as well. So with that, we are going to review the overall themes. And I do want to highlight on the front end that we are reporting out directly to you what we learned, not only from the in-person conversations and the virtual conversations, but also through the survey that K-12 Insight conducted. And all of that information is included in the document. So we did summarize this into overall themes. We'll answer any questions afterwards. I do want to say that the application closes on the 27th of February. To date, we have 14 applicants, which is very good because normally we get a majority of the applicants much closer to the closing date. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. White and Dr. Louder, and then we'll go from there. So, Dr. White?
Thank you, Dr. Ferry, and good evening to everyone there. I certainly echo the thanks of Dr. Ferry on your hospitality during our visit to Lynchburg. We had an absolutely wonderful stay and enjoyed immensely meeting everyone in the district and the community. I am going to briefly share with you the themes and ideas from questions number one and number two. As you remember, when we met with each stakeholder group, we asked them four questions so that we could gather their insight into the qualities and characteristics of your next leader. So the first question was, what makes your community a good place to live? And we heard these sentiments in a resounding manner throughout each group that we spoke with. First of all, just the location. You know, location is everything. And now having visited Lynchburg, I certainly agree with everything I heard about how beautiful it is there, the scenery, the mountains, the beaches, just where it is located, all of the opportunities that nature provides for those who live there because people feel like they can live a well-balanced life just because of the location. So that was, we can't wait to share that with your next leader. I know that they will love the geographic location of Lynchburg school system. People also talked that, talked about how the resources that the community is able to provide makes it a good place to live. And in resources, they shared with us that Lynchburg offers a great healthcare system, access to colleges and universities. They talked over and over again about how the downtown area is growing and developing to be a place that the full community can enjoy through the arts, the restaurants, and the culture. They certainly get and enjoy a small town, but they feel like they have, through the resources, access to the same things that people who live in larger cities have. What makes it a good, a good place to live is it's a family-oriented place, and we heard that over and over again. People feel like there's an influx of jobs and opportunities, again, going back to the central location of Lynchburg School District. Now, the second question was, what makes this a good school district for students and staff? And we took the time to ask these questions as a part A and a part B because we wanted to drill down far enough to learn what makes it a good school district for students and also for staff. And again, these themes came up over and over again. I don't care who we talked to, but people are very proud about what the school district offers to both groups. The college and workforce, workforce preparation opportunities. We heard this over and over again. The school district offers lots of innovation for students and for staff members through the types of support that they are able to get. There's lots of pride around the extracurricular activities, even down to transportation that is provided for those who might need that for participating in the extracurricular activities. To be a lot of teacher and administrator commitment. And that is felt throughout your, the school district there. Everybody talked a lot about how much commitment is seen and felt from the teachers and the administrators. Everybody there agrees that there's a lot of love for each other in Lynchburg. Teachers support each other. Administrators support teachers. And everybody supports the students. So that is a brief summary of the themes and the ideas that we received around the first two questions.
And good evening. My name is Chris Louder, and I'll be going over questions three and four. And I just want to echo what Dr. White said. We had a great visit to your school district. It's really nice when you get to be in a lot of schools, meet teachers, principals, administrators. But by far, our favorite groups were your student groups. So extremely engaged, extremely knowledgeable about their district and what was going on. They were really, really impressive. So thank you for the opportunity. We love meeting with your community. Question three, let me kind of go over question three and then summarize what we found. Question three is, what are the issues that a new superintendent needs to know about as he or she comes into the district? So what issues, what challenges are there? Very prominent in those responses was to talk about politics. And we kind of said, local, state, and national politics are major challenges for a lot of school systems. The perception is that the relationship between the city council and the school system is not necessarily good or is not exactly cohesive and needs to be nurtured. That came up in almost every meeting. Number two, perceived lack of common vision and mission from the school board and the superintendent. The new superintendent, along with the board, needs to create a very clear strategic plan, a clear facilities plan, and a plan to address the possible closure of schools. I know that came up, and that's something you guys are familiar with. But, you know, understanding what the plan for that is and communicating is something that came out quite a bit. Teacher turnover is another issue that came up. The perception is that teachers are leaving the district because they, there's not competitive pay compared to the state average. There's also a lack of consistent discipline and a strong competition in your area from private schools and home schools. The achievement gap is something else that was mentioned in a lot of groups. Within the first five or 10 minutes of those stakeholder groups, it was pretty common for somebody to say that the demographics of the school system do not reflect the demographics of the community and that the school system is significantly poorer than the community. And there's an achievement gap that's been there for a while. So that's obviously something that the new superintendent will need to work on. The transportation department was also brought up. A lot of it was, again, brought up around the closure of schools and trying to find drivers for buses and that maybe even transportation drove some of the bell schedules. And so that was something that they really wanted someone to focus on and look at. Also stated there should be an emphasis on academic achievement, student discipline, and attendance, that those are issues that are there and that need attention. And there must be significant improvement. Again, very quickly, people would say that communicating with all stakeholders, especially the positive aspects and achievements of the district to parents, guardians, the community at large, and in particular, the city council, to make sure that they were aware of everything that was going on positive in Lynchburg school system. Question four, the last question, was what skills or qualities and characteristics will the new superintendent need in order to be successful in your school district? There are many personal qualities the superintendent should possess. Visibility came up very quickly with all groups, including the student groups, just saying like, we need a superintendent that's going to be at our schools, in our schools, in the community, out downtown. We really need a, you know, someone to be that figurehead and be visible. So that came up quite a bit. Also with, you know, very general characteristics of just honest, ethical, transparent, and somebody who's empathetic and understands the problems of the area. The new superintendent also must work well with the city council and with the school board, to kind of work with both of those groups. The group stated the superintendent had to be assertive and brave, but also be able to compromise and work with others if they were going to be successful there. And the last thing is, again, just a variation of the same thing. The new superintendent needs to be a great communicator. That was the first thing that came up with, with a, you know, kind of an open door policy where people could make sure that they saw and could interact with the superintendent. And they also said they'd really like somebody who was here for the long haul and really was going to make an investment in Lynchburg.
So does anyone have any questions? I'd like to also say, though, that when I'm speaking to candidates, I am emphasizing the opportunities that Lynchburg presents. I believe there are outstanding opportunities for an educational leader to come into Lynchburg and work collaboratively with the Board of Education and the city council and the community to really address the issues that we heard as consistent themes. And there's no question about the fact that improving academic achievement, addressing the discipline issue in terms of consistency, and working on some cohesive strategic plan that has a clear vision for everyone. And we've been involved in strategic planning as educational leaders. And I've had the opportunity to develop many strategic plans. And they were always developed collaboratively with the city and the Board of Education. So everyone knew what the plan was for that next five years. And that's critical, particularly in budgeting, the challenge that we have with budgeting going forward. Because one of the questions I always asked was, when someone asks for something in the budget, well, is this in our strategic plan? Does this support our strategic plan? And that's a question that, in Virginia particularly, with the way schools are funded, that it's important because the city and the board need to be on the same page there. So with that, we'll answer any questions and continue our work to recruit the next two weeks.
Okay, Dr. Ferry, we're going to take some questions now. And I think we'll start with our chair, Dr. Gupta.
I had a question and a request. The question was, on your ad, somebody emailed me, texted me, says, "teaching experience required."
Let me just tell you the process going forward for us. So the next two weeks, we'll be recruiting. The application closes on the 27th. And then with your ad hoc committee, we'll start heading candidates and presenting candidates to the ad hoc committee.
Dr. Ferry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
My question was, your ad says, "teaching experience required." And I was with Heritage High School with you. And the consensus was, it should be open whether you have a teaching experience or you don't have a teaching experience.
Yes, sir. When we interview candidates, we'll get them into consideration.
Many of them may not apply, seeing the wording, "teaching experience required," instead of the word preferred.
Well, what I, what I'll do is I'll contact the home offer, at home office tomorrow and ask them to put preferred, this way it'll all be.
And then my second request for Dr. Tinsley was, in the share of, could we have the audience be able to ask questions?
Yeah.
So that way, anybody who wants to have a thought or a question, they can ask. So feel free to come at the podium if you have a question to ask. Is that fair?
I will just, I'll kind of maybe preempt a couple of questions. So first off, the results of this stakeholder, these So first off, the results of this stakeholder, these stakeholder meetings, we had 21 of them. And the report that we will post, and I'll talk about that in a minute, we are going to utilize that information in our interview process. As we develop interview questions and those types of things, this will be a part of that. That's number one. And number two, we will be posting the entire report that was given to us by McPherson and Jacobson. I'll say within the next couple of days, I just don't know with the snow and everything, it might take us a day or two to get it up. But we will post that on the website for the public to view.
Go ahead, the floor is yours.
All right, so any questions from the audience? If you do, step up to the podium there.
Mr. Connor.
Oh, gotcha.
I just would like to know, what type of response have you gotten so far for applicants?
So far, we have 14 completed applicants.
Is that on par with your usual, what you see, or is it ahead or behind?
It's on par because already the applicant, still out, I think the applicant's very close to the closing date.
To change the word, "teach education experience required" to "preferred," the number may go up. It may open up a new set of applicants.
Any other questions? This is your time, Dr. Nillis.
So out of the responses that you had, was there anything that really jumped out at you in terms of might being unique to Lynchburg? Or, I know you hit the high points from all, from the individual questions, but I was wondering if, out of those, if there was something in particular that struck you as being maybe a little specific to our school division?
I must share one thing. The innovation opportunities that were shared over and over and over again. The beacon of hope is a real sense of pride for Lynchburg's school system. So of course, when you visit different districts, you're going to hear different ways that they are, you know, different things that are unique to those school systems. So for me, the beacon of hope, the futures program, the governor's school, that makes Lynchburg stands out. I'm excited to be able to share that with applicants. And that's how I would answer that question, because we heard it everywhere we went in your school district. The innovative ways that Lynchburg tries to make sure that students are prepared for whatever step they want to take to, you know, after high school. It takes guts for a school district to step out there and meet students where they are and answer the question, what do you want to do after school? And then provide a way for them to get there. That certainly makes Lynchburg very unique, in my mind.
I think also, and we're seeing a trend, but not as significant in terms of what we saw in Lynchburg, is the disparity between the demographics of the city and the demographics of the school district. So if I was coming in there as a superintendent, I would want to know, I would want to do exit interviewing for parents who are leaving the district, find out specifically why, and hopefully be able to address a lot of those issues. In addition to that, it's really important that the next superintendent communicates all of the positive and outstanding aspects of the school district to the community, to the city council, so that there's a clear understanding of not, because very often we hear of all the challenges and negativity, but it's really important to communicate the positive as well. And I know that Dr. White and Dr. Lauder were very, very impressed with the opportunity to have conversations with the students, and that's where the strength is.
Dr. Free, would you like, you are from Pennsylvania, you and I talked about, what is the going rate for a superintendent salary in your neck of the woods?
Well, it depends. Each, up in Pennsylvania, we just place the superintendent, and don't fall off your chairs there, but the salary for that person, and that was on the main line near Philadelphia, was $335,000. Up on Long Island and New York, of course, standard, you know, the cost of living is much higher, housing, et cetera. The salaries are in the upper 200s to lower 300s. So, you know, it's all depending upon the region. And certainly, you do want to be competitive in terms of your region. And we can work with you on that. But it's going to be different depending upon the region of the country and the size of the district.
Is there anyone else that has a question?
Mr. Robertson, this is your chance to ask a question, if you want to. You have a question? No? Aaron, you don't have a question?
I have to speak to the powers that be, I don't want to be involved.
So, Dr. Ferry, I'd like to thank you and your team for all the hard work you've done thus far and what you'll continue to do with us as we move down the road on this search. And the report that they've prepared, I feel compelled to say this as well, the report that they've prepared is not just a summary, it is a very detailed report. And when that is posted, it's a multi-page document, actually breaks it down to every, all of the 21 meetings. It'll tell you what was said at each of the meetings, it will tell you what was said generally by other stakeholder groups. So it's a very detailed report.
And the ad will be changed tomorrow to a "teaching experience preferred" required.
I'll make that call first thing in the morning, first thing.
We appreciate every, Dr. Day, go ahead.
Where will the document be posted?
On LCS website.
LCS website, okay, thank you.
And we'll make sure that the process is open and transparent.
Absolutely.
And as we move through the search process, the community sessions will continue as we bring candidates or shortlist candidates.
Absolutely, and then, of course, at every one of our meetings here, I'm giving an update. So we're trying to keep this in front of the public.
And I just want to make sure that, I know we here, teachers are not represented, but to me, custodian, cafeteria staff, bus drivers, everybody is important. And they should be and will be involved in the process of hiring the next. Dr. Nillis, is that correct, sir? Your co-chair or the?
Board President, in terms of the ad, make sure the ad is changed on your website. I'll send a new position description, so it's changed on your website. We'll change it on our website, and we'll send out the position description to the 2,200 superintendents that we have in our database.
Recommending that, is that fair?
That's fine.
Teaching experience required just takes out a group of people who are just adminis, I'm just picking on Dr. Ward, I suppose he wants to apply, or somebody, you know? It just takes out people with administrative skills and experience to be able to apply, or CEO of a company who wants to apply. Thank you, we appreciate everything you've done, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Be good, Dr. Tinsley.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Next one is Bass Elementary, 2025 calendar, Dr. Copeland.
Yes, sir, thank you, Dr. Copeland, and good evening, members of the board. You will remember that just a few weeks ago, you adopted the LCS calendar. And at that time, I told you we would come back and do the Bass calendar as we do every year. So Ms. Hendricks always does a great job of adjusting her calendar based on what we did with the LCS. It is before you to consider tonight as, for information, and we can either approve it tonight, or it can be brought back at the next meeting if you'd like.
I just had a technical question about calendar. Once the board approves a calendar and there's a change in that, does it need to come back to the board? Or I got an email that this snow days where, you know, early dismissal was taken out. Does it need to come back to the board or is it just an administrative issue?
I think it depends on what it is, what the change may be. Generally, we would want to take that to the board of major changes like that, but I think the superintendent should have the right to make any minor adjustments as needed to address the hours and things like that. But, you know, if we're changing significant changes to breaks and things like that, that would usually were start and end times, that might be something that would come back to the board. But generally, the superintendent will make smaller adjustments as necessary.
So the snow day change was within the purview of the superintendent?
Well, I'm glad you kept the same as the regular calendar for their Thanksgiving and Christmas, so that was good.
I have a question about the calendar. Looking at it, at the bottom, it has a lot of green, but I don't see the green at the bottom.
So that'll be intercession, so we can, we'll make sure to add that.
Right.
Publish it, yes, sir.
And Dr. Ward, other, here thing, Bass is all year-round school, but what I've heard over the years is, it's a dual track, right? Some are year-round, some are not year-round.
Well, the TAP program, the Transition Alternative Program, is the normal schedule with LCS, but the rest of, sort of the general Bass Elementary School, is the extended calendar. We sometimes call it year-round, but it's really just an extended calendar, because there is still a summer break and that sort of thing, it's just a little bit longer.
It's not opt-out for anybody to be out of that extended calendar. Is there a motion to approve the calendar?
Motion.
Mrs. Lowry, Dr. Day, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
He's not there.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next one is Student Services Policy Updates, Dr. Copeland.
Previous board meeting, Dr. Brown and his team were here to give the presentation. We ran out of time, so they are back here tonight to answer questions and continue the question and answer period. There might be a few refresher slides, yes, no?
No.
There's a student service policy, that's what we're doing now. Then there's the alt ed.
Alt ed.
President Lowry.
Yeah. Sorry, I have some boring stuff before we get to the fun part. But if we're good to proceed, I know I met with Ms. Preston and Hope Towns, our attorney, to go through our policy review for some student service policies that just needed a three-year review and some other updates as reflected, as some codes were added and references to other resources. And just was seeing if there's any questions about what was in the board package. The VSBA updates and everything were pretty straightforward, and didn't know if there was any questions, but we're happy to entertain those at this time if there are.
Yeah, I had one question about one of the policies.
Yes, sir.
Policy JO about student records. I think we should include as a cross-reference, Policy JBBZ, that's our gender policy, because it did refer to how a student's name should be listed. In Policy JBBZ, we said that a student's legal name should be the name in their official record, but Policy JO doesn't refer to an official record, it refers to a directory listing. So how do we reconcile those?
I think a cross-reference to that policy would be appropriate.
Should we, in Policy JO, should we, where it says "student's name," should it be "student's legal name"?
I think if you want to define that as a board and make sure that that's cross-referenced in the policy, I think that shures that up, if that's the desire of the board.
Could be added line, "all names will be as defined by Policy GPZ."
JBBZ. So just to show you where it was. Notification, duh, 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 duh. Trying to locate it in JO, I'm not sure I can do it on the fly.
Is it under directory information, towards the bottom?
Yeah, student directory information is defined to include the following, and there's a list.
Yes, sir.
The first item on the list says "student's name," and I'm asking if it should say "student's legal name."
Definitely creates a stronger policy if that's the desire of the board to do that. It's a simple change.
Is the directory listing different than the official record?
Directory listing under FERPA is information that can be disclosed about a student. We define directory information.
So do we have a separate official record on the student? Is there a difference? There is a difference.
Yeah, directory information is what we would, what we define in most school divisions, define it, including these. A student's record is an actual physical record, and there are all different kinds of things, but their legal name is on the record, it's a paper folder. This is just referring to information that can be
Publicized.
Released.
Okay.
Yes.
So I don't want to push the issue any farther unless someone else has an opinion about it.
I just had a question for Attorney Towns on drugs in school. Have you looked at this policy, Attorney Towns, you're good? Prevention and intervention.
I reviewed the policy, and as far as any suggestions or changes, there was nothing from a legal standpoint that I had any concerns about.
Thank you. It's a motion to adopt these policies.
I move we adopt these policies.
Dr. Day.
Second.
Mr. Andrews, second, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry.
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley.
Yes.
Now continuation of alternative education.
Now back to where we were a few minutes ago.
Let the fun begin. Yes, I just wanted to, we gave a long presentation last time. I really appreciate the opportunity to spend that amount of time going through our LCS restore programs. And just as a refresher, because it's been a little bit of time, I don't want to labor to point. And we also have many of our leaders from our alternative system and our restorative system here as well to answer any questions that you might have. But just want to go over a few slides as refresher, and just a really 30,000-foot bird's eye view of the program. So on slide nine, just to highlight, remember, to this point this year, we have served over 500 students in our programs. The suspension rate was around 60%, 59%. Before we had any of these interventions, students being re-suspended, so getting in trouble, being suspended at home, and then getting in trouble and receiving another suspension was 59%. We've reduced that all the way down to 18.3% since implementing these programs. We are even more proud of the same, re-offense for the same offense. So students aren't going back for the same thing. We've reduced that re-suspension rate to the suspension center down to 8.6%. As far as academic outcomes, for our secondary restorative academy, students are coming in with a GPA of, on average, 1.06, which is a D average, and then they're leaving with a GPA of 2.6. And we also define academic progress and academic improvement by the number of classes that students are passing of their core classes. And so we didn't want to just look at growth, to Ms. Lowry's point from your question last meeting. We're not looking just to see, are they improving the GPA or improving the grades? But are they on track for graduation and on track to receive those verified credits and locally verified credits by earning and passing those courses? And so we have seen that at our, at Fort Hill, almost a 93% rate of students maintaining or improving their grades at RA Secondary, 100% of those students have maintained or improved those grades. And furthermore, we have a vast majority of those students that are improving their grades, not just maintaining, to the tune of 60% approximately at Fort Hill and 75% at secondary RA. At the secondary RA Elementary, 100% of those students are passing the math and reading courses, which we know is extremely important for the grade levels that that program serves, which is kindergarten, first grade. We want to keep those kids on track, not to be retained, so that they don't get further behind and really address the issue at the root. If you recall, the upstream, being upstream, and not just pulling kids out of the river later on doing interventions, but really trying to stop the kids from getting into the river. And then at TAP, Transition Program, 73% of those kids are passing all of their core classes. And we looked at those upper grades for that. And then just talking about the division impact, we had a slide on slide 22, if you recall, where we have looked at composites from referrals from all of the different categories, not all of the categories, but some of the top ones that I know was key and important for the board to reduce across the division. Violent offenses, fights, assaults, threats, classroom disruptions, all have come down over the last two years, and we're seeing those referral numbers decrease and improve. all have come down, um, over the last two years, and we're seeing those referral numbers decrease and improve. Do we have everything fixed and is everything sunshine and buttercups? No, not at all. Uh, we still have a lot of work to do. Um, this is the perfect storm, I've said this since I've gotten here. Perfect storm for like student behavior to be poor. Um, we have increased social media use and just unregulated social media use. We have easier access to substances and a lot of research coming out about how marijuana, THC, impacts adolescents and developing minds. Um, and then the isolation and all the things that came along with disruption of school systems and schools during COVID and, and that time, that time period. So a lot of time, uh, trying to put some really intentional, um, interventions in place so that we can try to curb those behaviors and get us to a better place, and we do see that as working. Um, and I think one of the things that's really important to highlight, especially for a board, um, it wasn't necessarily, maybe you weren't in your positions, um, when we first started putting some of these interventions in place, but there were, was a time where, um, you know, we were struggling to take care of kids in preschool and kindergarten programs, and teachers were pulling their hair out, says, you know, they didn't have any strategies. We didn't have any mental health services or, um, social emotional behavior support services in our schools or in our alternative schools. There was a time with Fort Hill, um, it was really, really tough for principals to get their kids out of their base schools into, uh, Fort Hill because of the structure of the program. So we've tried our best, um, on a very meager budget, um, with limited resources, to put a meaningful system in place. And we feel like that's making a huge difference and an impact. Um, and again, it's garnered, um, regional, state, and international attention, um, which we're really, really proud of. And I would like to just take this time, just transition and say, um, it's not all me at all. It's, um, wonderful folks behind me that show up every single day. Um, I mean, it's hard to be administrator, it's really hard to be an adult, all ed administrator. You get it from every angle, like, uh, these are kids that have behavioral challenges for whatever reason. And so, um, it's like the Charlie Brown Christmas tree, those kids just need a little love. And these folks show up every single day with the teachers and IAs and restorative specialists and clinicians to give those kids those loves, um, and show them, we're not just going to throw them away. We're not just going to lock them away in a building and forget about them, we'll let them serve their time, but we're going to restore them to what we know that they can be, um, because it's important here in LCS that we take care of every child by name, by need, to graduation and beyond. So at that, I'll entertain any questions, and, um, our folks here are eager to mention, uh, talk to you as well.
Dr. Day?
Yeah, um, so, um, I think as board members know, both Mrs. Lowry and myself, uh, wrote down a list of questions that went to Dr. Brown, and he very thoughtfully gave us written answers for them, and I'm very grateful for that.
It's a fun exercise. Thank you, sir.
I'm grateful.
Always, always fun.
Fun exercise.
Really? Well, then I'll give you a longer list.
Careful what you ask for.
Got some snow days on me.
But I also wanted to thank all, all the people that you just thanked who work with these kids every day. I could not do what you and your folks are doing, it's just beyond me. So I realize how incredibly difficult a task it is. Um, I did raise one question at the very end, and I want to read my question and your response, and then I just have a follow-up question for that.
Yes, sir.
Um, the, the last question that I asked is, well, it's not really a question, it's just sort of a thought.
Yeah.
"In some cases, maybe behavior modification and keeping up academically are too much to try to achieve at once. Perhaps the philosophy should be behavior modification, modification and classroom skills first, with the plan that they will restart and repeat the same academic year in regular classes in the coming fall." That was the issue I was raising, just thinking that maybe, you know, it can be hard to pull the student out, put them in the restorative center, and at the same time as we're trying to train them to behave more, uh, constructively and get them ready to re-insert them back into their home class and have them up with their classmates, it seems like an awful lot to try to do. And so I'm just raising the issue, could we put the students through the restorative system, and then in the next fall, they restart that year? And that was the issue I raised. And Dr. Brown's response was, "It is important to try to keep students on track to graduation without just passing them along. We want them to earn their diplomas. By holding students back prematurely, they could age out of public, of public ed and become a dropout." And so I appreciate those concerns as well. So my follow-up question is, i- if the problem is that they would sort of age out of the system, is there any way we could make policy changements to allow a student who needs to repeat a year because of time spent in the restorative system, give them an extra year to finish high school so that we wouldn't be pushing them out the door before their time ran out? And if there was a way to do that, would it be good?
Yeah, I appreciate the question and the thought. I think it's a thoughtful suggestion. And it's, um, through state policy and code that students can only stay in high school to a certain age, and then once that age expires, then, you know, they're not able. It's a little bit different for students with IEPs, um, they'll have those accommodations, they can stay longer. But if a school board made a policy change to allow for that, it wouldn't be aligned with code. But also, I think a lot of these kids, uh, are really bright, they just have that behavioral challenge in, in front of them, and we're seeing that we're able to intervene. Uh, one of the things that we want to look at long-term is what's the longitudinal data? And so as students are returning back, we know that they're staying there now for the short term, but over the last, next couple of years, that's something that we'll be studying to get that longitudinal data to see are those impacts maintaining and staying along? But I do think that it's, um, always our educational philosophy that we set the bar just above where our highest kids can reach, and a rising tide raises all ships. And so if we can get our kids that opportunity to stay on track and graduate and get into the workforce, um, the college, the, the next phase of life, I think, uh, our community colleges, that's a good opportunity for them to do. Uh, ideally, I'm, you're exactly right, it's a Herculean task to try to work on behavior. And I know Mr. Martin, um, and all of our, Ms., uh, Ms. Scott, Ms. Cooley, Dr. Glover, all of them can attest, if they get the opportunity to speak, um, it's really challenging trying to change behavior for kids. Like, that's a science, and Mr. Ferguson, our BCBA, um, knows how much of a science that is to try to replace behaviors and get kids to understand they're in a different environment, and they don't have to use the certain behaviors that, um, they need to, to survive. Um, they don't need to use those in every environment. And so it would be ideal that we could do something like that, but I don't think that we have that opportunity in our legal system and, and public ed. It's more of an "and" than an "or." And you, you all know better than ever, anybody about the, the "and." We have to do this, "and" we need to do this. Dr. Glover's here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I was just going to add a couple comments related to what Dr. Brown was saying. So one of, one of my jobs last time, excuse me, when I came, was to try to convey some of the complexities of alternative education and the students that are entering and transitioning back and forth because of how it affects our day-to-day operations, uh, and also the student's success. And I think this is another one of those areas. So research, and, and I can pull some sources for you if you'd like, but research, um, would indicate that, that, um, it's not, particularly as students get older, but just in general, holding students back often doesn't have the effect that we think it would have. In fact, the dropout rate increases, um, when students are retained. Um, and I think another complexity with the idea is that some students would have, because they're entering all different parts of the year. So say you've spent the first three quarters in your base school, and then you get sent to Fort Hill for your last quarter. Do you then repeat, do you then repeat your whole grade because of one quarter?
Yeah, I understand.
Um, but additionally, I guess, I think it does kind of bring up the opportunity, like we were just saying, I'm bending over a lot because I'm taller than Dr. Brown. It does bring up the opportunity just to kind of have a conversation about some of the complexities of alternative education, because you asked this question, I think Ms. Lowry was asking this question too, about the balance between academics and behavior. And that is not an easy thing to figure out exactly what that balance is. There's a high correlation between academics and behavioral problems. So students that have low, uh, academics or higher, um, needs academically often have higher behavioral problems and vice versa. It's like a chicken or egg conversation. But trying to figure out that balance is challenging, because at Fort Hill and I know at the other schools, we are trying to follow the pacing guides of the logs to try to keep kids on track essentially with their base schools, but sometimes that's not what they need in the moment. They need something else in the moment, and so then you're trying to figure out how to give them what they need and also keep them on track, and that's never an easy or exact science, I don't think.
I think that you should be commended, though, all of you, because it is, it, it is walking a tightrope. It's finding that place that you are encouraging the student to be successful, but that, that you're also encouraging them to be the best person that they can be. But that requires that you have a relationship with that, with that young person as well. So it's a tightrope, and the fact that you walk that tightrope so successfully, um, all the time, every day, it is, is really commendable. So thank you for all that you do.
So Connor, go ahead.
I've got, I didn't send the thing in, but I have two questions. Um, the suspension, and I want to talk to the suspension center guru.
Mr. Martin.
You know, my question's about the suspension center is, how effective is that? Because I think growing up, I was, you know, over y'all and pulling my school records, but I might have been suspended a couple times, and, um, when I was in school. You didn't hear that, Doc? But one of the things that, um, kept me from continuing to get suspended is, um, my mother having to find daycare for me, or babysitter, or take off work because I wouldn't, I didn't have a suspension center to go to. How does this suspension center create the same resistance to a child wanting to repeat? Hey, I can just, I can act up because I can go to the suspension center, spend three days. My second part of that question is, how do, in those three days, are we providing transportation for them to get to the suspension center? And the second part of that question is, um, how are they, how are we communicating with the, because I'm assuming you got thirteen, fourteen different schools coming to the suspension center, all the different grades, how are we, how are we keeping a continuity with their academics?
Take it through, like, the front of the house, kind of stuff.
Yes, sir. Um, so student gets suspended from their base school, I, I communicate with the principals. The principals, uh, then send a work request form to their base, their core teachers. The teachers have a timely manner to fill that out. Everything is done within a twenty-four hour window to give that time to process over for the student to be suspended. I put in a rule to where if it's after one o'clock in the day, the student cannot be added on to the suspension list to give that process time to occur for the academics, because that's one of the key, you want to focus on. Um, once the student arrives at the suspension center, um, they're scanned in, and according to their amount of days, if Jared Martin is there for five days, the first thing he's going to do is an entry ticket, which is going to pinpoint the things that they did to get suspended. The next thing he's going to do is they're going to pull out their school handbook, policy handbook, and they're going to go over the, um, code in which they violated, so that they know the things that they done. Um, throughout the course of that, they're going to do their schoolwork, and we have other restorative, um, work that we can do for the student. Um, we also circle up with the student and talk about some of the things that they did as long as things that other students have done. So we just make it really tough for them not to want to come back and don't make an inviting for them, then keep that component out of there. We want to make it a place that they don't like, but we also want to make it a place to where they learn and they understand and they get educated on what things not to do, understand the rules and how to follow the rules and obey the rules, just not breaking.
And what's the parent's participation in that? Is there any?
Uh, the base school contacts the parent, um, and until the student arrives at my building, the base school is responsible for them. So say for instance, Jared comes and arrives one day, he has five days but doesn't show up, it's my responsibility to contact the parent to then reach out to make sure the student is now coming.
One of the things that they also make sure is that students have a plan and goals going into the school, like apologize to anybody, what they need to do so that they don't do that again. Um, and we also, Mr. Martin, looked out, um, it's the most fun part of the job, taking their cell phones, um, when they arrive, because it's a restorative process and a lot of reflection that goes on there. So even before policy changes, that was one of our rules, that, um, phones are in yonder pouches. Um, so the kids aren't, are distraction-free, um, as far as transportation.
Yes, transportation is provided. Um, we have a special shuttle bus that goes to Heritage Glass and our three middle schools, um, for the students who are at the suspension center.
Can you just clarify the grade levels that the suspension center covers, please?
It'll be just secondary, so you're middle school and high school.
Elementary.
Yeah, so, yes.
And then my last question is, this might be for, if you had a genie here that could say boom, what would be your solution to go from where we are now to being an exceptional, um, alternative education center? What would that wish list look like?
A bigger building and more staff.
To be centralized or?
Be centralized, yes.
Yeah.
I know they have more, but that will be my thing, because I'm in two different professions right now.
I'm Tina Cooley. I am the career coordinator for the Transition Alternative Program. And since you asked, it would be wonderful if we could figure out how to house us together in some fashion, because the thing that we struggle with is staff. When things are happening, like today, we had three things going on at once. I'm out in the street, and I've got other staff back at the building trying to keep things together. But if we had a whole building and maybe we're housing some of our, um, school social workers had offices and some of our school psychologists in a building, then we would be able to have some more resources to be able to help in those emergency situations. So that's my dream.
My dream is shared with you, Kim Scott, with the Elementary Restorative Academy, the exact same as she stated. Um, and in addition to that, we also service students with disabilities as well. So, um, the, the level of, of work and collaboration that it takes for us to work along with the base schools, for the work that we do, we're having to tap into those resources and staffing because of our shortage with staffing, um, and the needs. Um, and so even though we're kindergarten and first grade, the level of needs is so intense because those level of needs are extended because of the things that the students bring to the table when they come to us. So, um, again, we do work in conjunction with all the base schools, but a lot of the needs are exactly the same. So we do the best with what we have, we make the most of it because the kids are on the receiving end of that. They don't, we don't get, they don't get more time because of the things that we don't have. So we have to make the most of who we have, and we have to be patient. And sometimes what that does is that can lack our ability to be able to move the students forward as quickly, more quickly than what we're able to do, just simply because we do have to, to wait and be patient. And again, um, understand that it takes a lot of work to be able to meet the needs of the kids when you don't have sufficient amount of staffing. So I would love to have a couple of little test.
Meeting everyone.
Hey, Jeff.
Most of you know me as the guy that does the data. Um, I want to take a minute and go back to this data. This is wow data. I need you to take a second and look at those numbers and not go, that's pretty good. I tend to approach most of these things with a little bit of a pessimistic attitude, because I think if we're looking at something, it's probably because we see a problem. I did not expect to see GPAs going up as high as they did. I did not expect to see behaviors going down as far as they did. We need to, we need to acknowledge how much gain is being made with a very thin group of people and be aware of the impact that that has, because I think sometimes we look and they go, oh, growth is great. Every time I did stuff, I looked at it and I said, I think I did this wrong. This looks a little better than I expected, and I go back through and I go back through. There's a lot of good stuff there. So if you haven't really looked at that data to what, to the point where you feel comfortable quoting it, then you've missed some big nuggets in there because there's some really good stuff that we need to say. If this were a hospital, we wouldn't be talking about whether or not we want to run it. We'd be saying, how do we better equip it? So that's all I have.
Thank you, Chuck. I just wanted to add to what Chuck said, uh, last year when I spoke in front of the board. Um, we talked about these programs as they were being initiated and built, and we related to, to small businesses. And generally, it takes three years for the average small business to start showing a profit. We are, uh, a year and a half into this, and we are showing immense profit. We are far ahead of schedule in comparison with any small business out there. And part of the reason why I think we're seeing such growth in academics is many of our students come to the table and they're not able to access the academics at all. If you refer to Baslow's Hierarchy of Needs, which I'm sure everybody here has seen a thousand times, but, you know, the, the physiological needs and the safety and security, and then the esteem needs, and learning really happens on the fourth and fifth step of that. After you take care of their safety and help them feel connected, now people are in a psychological space where they're able to gain and retain new information. They're safe enough to learn. And so once that work is. And so, once that work is done, and this speaks to the question also of academics or behavior, and the answer is yes. Because very often what we do is we, we get a student in who can't access the learning, because they're in crisis through the, on the, due to their SEL level, they just can't navigate it, and they can't access the learning. But once we teach them to self-regulate, once we build trusting relationships with them, once they know that their environment, their learning environment is predictable and safe, and will meet them where they are and build those capacities, then, when they do grab the learning, they tend to grab it with both hands, because now we're on the fourth step of that, which is where you're getting your self-esteem needs met, and where you're starting, and the fifth step is where you're starting to self-actualize. And for anybody that's gone through that process themselves, you realize, oh, this is a thing. And once you start having that success, it starts building upon itself. And so what we're seeing are gains that are being made that are outsized sometimes of the actual intervention, because they're able to, the, the students that we have, many of them are, are very intelligent. They're just using that intelligence in order to survive. And once they realize that they're safe enough to learn, well, then they start applying the full force of that intelligence to the learning process, and those are the results that we're seeing.
One more, just one. Do you have any students that become acclimated to the alternative? And, because we're talking about transitioning back to school, are there some that would do better completing their education in the alternative program versus going back to a base school? And how would that look? Is there a, is there a way a child could say, hey, I'm doing good here, let me stay here because this fits me?
Yeah, that's, that's the rare exception. Um, sometimes temporarily, yes, but you also start, one of the things we do in the alternative program is once that student starts feeling ready, once they are being successful there, we immediately start pairing that success with their ability to navigate the general ed environment. So often, we partner with general education classrooms. We'll bring an extra adult with them in those classrooms, and that's where the, the RBTs come into play. And they help them navigate that environment, and there is a high level of reinforcement that's associated with that. So now, although they feel safe and they feel connected there, they're also getting a lot of reinforcement for that achieving in the regular classroom environment, and that starts to overtake it. So it's the rare case. Sometimes, functionally, if a student is limited, and they're not able, they're not functionally able to go through those processes, then we have to look at other options. Or if the mental health needs are, are too severe, and that person is, is living in a crisis.
And, one of the parts that we designed into LCS Restore with the Restorative Academies, the ideal goal is for them to learn the appropriate behaviors, be able to function, and then go back to the base school. But it's also a, a intersection. Um, and so sometimes we find that those students need more than a quarter to work with that staff, and so they're able to go to Fort Hill with Dr. Glover for a longer stay. Um, and we do have some students at Fort Hill that are there for an extended period of time and, and do better in that smaller environment. We also have students, um, with special education accommodations and needs, IEPs, that go to private day situations, and so sometimes, um, the base school is not a one-size-fits-all for everybody.
Ms. Lowery, go ahead. Last question.
I would say, thank you, Mr. Ferguson. You answered one of my questions, because last time you guys talked about all the great things Mr. Glover's saying that they do to get the kids all, you know, cheered up to go back, but nobody said you go in the classroom. So thank you for saying someone goes with them in the classroom. They spend time there with that help. That's good. My other thing is, and this is just as an educator, and I don't know how this would fit in in alt-ed, but let's say, yeah, I read that you put in one of the, um, answers that their reading levels are so low. Is there like a hour where you take, it's just that tutoring hour or section where you say, okay, I have four kids on a second grade reading level, we're going to read second grade book, and we're going to work from there? Or are you always just giving them the high school or the middle school, the, the reading material, which they can't read?
Yep. So at RA, we've incorporated a tutoring portion, so we're all in tutoring. So each, um, three days a week, we do tutoring, and we focus on the core classes to where we're doing reading, math, or science within there, or whatever the students are struggling in. So we've incorporated that. The other two days a week are restorative days.
Is that where you're using like, is, Ms. P, did you say that tier, is it tier three is the?
Transition.
The, 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 for the OG, though, or Gillingham, because that's used in one of the tiers. Is that tier one or tier three?
It's not tier one. It would probably be tier two.
Oh, tier, oh, so I'm going the wrong way. So is that something used in the tutoring? Because I've found that's very, very helpful.
Yes, we've been doing it. So we've isolated the students, and we take them one-on-one with the teacher, or you go with the IA, or um, maybe our sped lead, and we give one-on-one help during that time. So we really slow things down to make sure that they're getting the tutoring portion in.
All right.
I think that's why you're seeing some of the numbers within the data.
And for that genie question, um, that's what I brought up at the joint meeting tonight with the city, that there, that the city find a building where you all can be in one place. So, and then, um, actually, Nick Caputo also would like to be focused there, as, as his office centralized there as well, and then you could have the other offices for social workers. So I, that is what I brought to the table tonight, so.
Um, to go back to your reading levels or literacy question, one of the things I would just add is, um, particularly for secondary, most teachers in secondary weren't trained in foundational literacy skills, because it's an elementary, um, something that's typically done in elementary, or not elementary school, but when you're trained to be an elementary teacher. Um, and so we have had that challenge. Our teacher's trying to figure out how do we develop some of these literacy skills that are lacking in some of our students. So, the, uh, Virginia Literacy Act is something that was passed by the state legislature and the governor recently, and so it requires all elementary and middle school teachers to go through this training that lasts about twenty-five hours. Ministers had to go through it as well. Um, but we have, at Fort Hill, we just are partnering with some of the trainers from UVA that help with some of that stuff, and they're coming to our building to start working with our teachers so that they know those skills, um, because you can't do what you don't know.
Yes.
Um, so that's one of the things that they're working on.
All right, awesome. That's great.
I do want to say thank you for all you do.
Yes, thank you.
All of you guys. Love job.
Yep.
And I think I just had, I think Ms. Scott had one testimonial she wanted to read, um, if that's appropriate. If not, we can email it if we need, if we're short on time.
Just go ahead quickly, yeah.
I think it's so important that through all of this, that we do hear the good things publicly, um, as well, and I think I've just got actually several connections from different places that have actually pursued us, and who also just want to recognize and hear more about us. So we had an LCS senior, uh, senior in the AP, AP Research Class at EC Glass reach out to us, to the Restorative Academy in support of their topic focus, to contribute to research gathered throughout the year to the college board at the end of the school year. They were interested in how restorative justice plays a part in discipline policies and procedures for LCS. Haven't been reading a great deal about restorative practices and hopes that the research addresses this important topic. So, um, a restorative specialist was able to go out to EC Glass, um, to meet with that senior and con, to contribute to their particular research. Uh, Liberty University School of Education and faculty sponsor of the Urban Education Club reached out to invite us to speak to the students. The purpose of the club is to prepare students for the realities and challenges of working in urban communities. Their particular theme was creating calm classrooms. Emphasis was placed on self-regulation, de-escalation, focus, and student engagement. They reached out to inquire about us coming to speak to approximately fifty students about the work being done at our Restorative Academy. Uh, Montgomery County Public Schools has reached out to us wanting to gain a deeper understanding of various alternative school programs across Virginia. Their goal is to explore different program models, best practices, and innovative strategies that support student success in alternative education settings. Per their director, they reached out and would appreciate the opportunity to visit our program and learn more about the structure, interventions, and support systems that we have in place for students. This visit would allow them to gain insights that can help strengthen their approach to pursuing alternative education within their division. We value your expertise and look forward to the opportunity to learn from your program. And then a testimony from one of our very own, uh, Darrington Elementary School, one of our students who transitioned back uh, just this past December. The first grade student is adjusting, and this is per the general education classroom teacher, um, whose classroom he is a part of. He's adjusting well to our class. He participates in class discussions, completes his work, and seems to be making friendships and doing well socially. He occasionally gets frustrated or overwhelmed and cries, but I just keep reminding him to ask for help, and we work through it. And he says, I remember that. He won an attendance award, this was just this week, he won an attendance aw, award, and the STEM award was for always participating in STEM lab and for showing enthusiasm and excitement about the activities. He is enjoyed to work with, and we love having him in our class. Thank you to you and the Restorative Academy.
Oh, that's awesome.
It's very important that we hear those types of, of reports, and just know uh, that we take pride in the work that we do, and we appreciate your support, and look forward to great things to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to leave you with, uh, if there are no other questions, just want to leave you with two thoughts.
Dr. Tinsley, you have a question?
Yeah, I don't want to open a Pandora's box, but I'm very curious about this. So, in the past year or so, we've changed some policies on, uh, student conduct, and has resulted in an increase in the number of cases the Student Discipline Committee has heard. I know the primary effect of that is you see more students coming through RA and, and Fort Hill and other places. I'm curious about the second and third order effects of, of those policies. Can you speak just generally to, to any of that?
Um, would you be, I need a little more context, like the, the stress and strain on the system, or like positive?
Yeah, positive.
Unintended concept?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so, it's interesting, um, because there are so many factors at play when you look at student discipline, alternative education. Um, so this is a really complex question. Um, I do know that there's a body of research that speaks to exclusionary practices and suspensions that they don't really exhibit many positive, if any, positive outcomes for students. Um, I do think that, being that we have a restorative system, and students are able to come into it and receive those services, is, um, a lifesaver. I do think that if we just had those, um, suspensions and hard line policies without any interventions, then it would be really detrimental to not just our school, uh, schools, community, and students, but also our community at large. Because those students are, um, going to be out of school more. Uh, when they're in our suspension centers and our Restorative Academies, attendance is accounted for, and, um, that helps our accreditation. Um, so it's just all around positive impact. Um, I do think that it's important to realize, um, that with the increase of suspensions and, uh, expulsions, uh, longer suspension times to RSC, uh, that does put a stress and strain on the system, um, that we really just kind of piecemeal. Um, just to be honest with you, like, we went out and we fought hard for grants. Um, I always have Doc, anytime I have a, a initiative, I have Dr. Gupta like on my shoulder saying, how are you going to sustain it? How are you going to sustain it? And so I always try to think through that, and we don't want to put things in place. Um, so we went out and fought, fought for grants, um, because we don't want to just ask for money and say city council, or put you guys in a position to ask for more funding for something that we think might be a good idea. Um, but we went out, we found the funding, we found amazing people to work and run our programs, empower them to go do that work, and we're seeing positive outcomes. And now, uh, we're at a point where, you know, I think I say boldly, we need to sustain these programs, um, especially if we have those policies in place, because I think it will, um, be a hindrance for students if we don't.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, for all your hard work.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate you and your staff, uh, amazing things, in our school districts. So, have, um, thank you, Dr. Poplin.
Uh, Dr. Gupta, can I leave you with two things? That'll be ten seconds.
Ten seconds.
Thank you, sir. Time me.
Hard commercial break right after.
So, um, I think it's important to realize that it's not just a preventative program, but also uh, if these students aren't going to these restorative academies, that's of great likelihood, especially if they have IEP, that they're going to private day, um, situations. And that's, has a really heavy expensive cost to it, uh, for our city, for our school system. So there's something to keep in mind. And also, I would appreciate your advocacy for one building, and as you heard from our, our folks, um, I would just add the caveat nuance that it would be really important to have a elementary building and a K-12, uh, secondary building. Um, think about K-12, putting all K-12 kids on a bus, or, you know, having a school that's K-12. Um, there's a lot of different needs, and, um, that could be a little bit, um, challenging, but if we had two separate things, it could be helpful.
So if they're in the same building, though, you could have two buses.
Two bell times.
Yeah, and then you would have your secondary in one, and your elementary in another. You could have your elementary come in one door, and secondary coming in a different one. So there's a
And they're going to be in the building together.
Yeah, they're going to be in the building. They, they don't just mean that they're going to be on the same floors. You know, there's a whole lot to it, so it's a lot of thinking through still. It's a work in progress.
I just, I would, um, encourage and, and welcome, like, we're here to help and ask and, um, you know, be advised during these kind of talks and negotiations as we're planning, and we, we want to have, um, be a, a resource for you all and support the work that you're doing, because I know you're out there fighting for us, and we appreciate it.
I'll be keeping in touch.
Thank you.
Yeah, beautiful.
That's a longer discussion.
Thank you for the time. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
So, the next one is the Special Board Committee reports. I'll open up for anybody who has any reports, instead of going around in the circle.
Um, I've got one from
Go ahead.
Uh, Laurel. Um, the, they, let me get the right paper out. Okay, so the modular is going to be replaced by one large one, that was said, the one big one, a big building. And it comes to fifty-two thousand, but with the budget, there'll be money left over, so there'll be a positive balance when that's done. Um, also, um, Amazement Square is involved with our, um, Laurel, and they're doing the True Story of the Three Little Pigs. They're an iPad, so they're working with our, the students at Laurel as well. And also, um, most of the dates, the things they've done are past, but um, the Boy Scouts troop came with Martha Lipscomb. Um, uh, they did the special bench in memory of a former speech therapist, Martha Lipscomb, I'm sorry. And the Amazing Sports Program is a two-year special program, STEM sessions with the kids, trips to Amazement Square. Um, it started February fourth. And then, uh, they're doing the Kumba African Dance Drum Ensemble will be there. It was there February seventh. And partnerships with Jojo's and University of Lynchburg DVT are going well. Um, the Lynchburg Rose Partnership is also going well, um, work-related skills and trips for the younger students. They had a Valentine's, um, talent show, and, um, and a party, and the EC Glass team um, was invited, as well as Heritage High School, to attend. So, um, and they just say, happy school board month.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, the next one is informational items. Academic Success Committee on February twenty-fifth. Next school board meeting, March fourth. Next financing facilities, March eleventh. L-LACR on March eighteenth. Next school board work session, uh, I think it's March eighteenth, right?
It's, it's just a typo. It should be February, March.
Discipline, Data Review Committee is March thirteenth. And Academic Success Committee meeting has not been scheduled in March.
Well, the, I, then, there's two options, the eighteenth or the twenty-fifth. So, I don't know which one.
We'll work that out.
Okay, all right.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.